Special meeting of the Village of Pinehurst Planning and Zoning Board for March 16th, 2023. It is 4:00 PM. Before I start, I'd like to make a significant, or let us all celebrate a significant announcement that was made at the council meeting last Tuesday night, and much to Alex's chagrin, I'm going to bring this up. That we're all pleased that Alex Cameron has been selected and accepted the position as the head of the Village of Pinehurst Planning Department, and congratulations.[43.12][43.12](APPLAUSE). Can't think of anyone more qualified with a better background to lead us forward. And I think I can speak for the rest of the board, saying we are going to do our best to keep it going as fast as we can and ensure your success, along with the rest of the department.
We greatly appreciate that, we really do. And we do have a lot of work to do, but obviously that's why we're here. And this is a significant project that we've all already invested a lot of our time and energy in, and Bruce gets to make up for lost time in that, so that's why he's here.[80.61][80.61](LAUGHING) And willing and able to jump right in. So, again, with that said, we appreciate all the extra effort that you guys are putting in, the extra commitment, and I will tell you that staff certainly recognizes that, and I know village council does, and we get this at least to the finish line as much as is expected or can be done by the Planning and Zoning Board, then we know that's a job well done.
Great. I will note, we do have six members present, so we do have a quorum. Along with the board members, we have members of the Planning Department, Alex Cameron, Maria Carpenter, Alfred Cassidy, and Shannon Constance, who's been keeping us honest as far as notes go, we hope. So with that, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes, and we have two meetings, meeting minutes to approve, and we'll handle those separately, please. The first one was the meeting minutes from March 2nd, 2023, regular meeting, where we had, I believe, three different public hearings at that meeting, so it's very important that we take a look at that. Are there any comments, additions, corrections to those minutes as submitted? Hearing none, I will take a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
March 2nd, 2023.
We have a motion by Luis and seconded by Sonia. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, those regular meeting minutes have been approved. Now we'll move on to the meeting minutes of March 9th, the special meeting, where we reviewed some of the form-based codes for village places, I recall. And if you look at those minutes, is there any corrections, additions, or corrections that need to be addressed? I do have three things that I just want to note, they do not have to be changed in minutes meetings, but I'd like to note that we did discuss at least three different items, one being the question of parking, whether parallel and/or diagonal parking made sense in all cases, and I think, although we didn't come to a conclusion, it was going to be carefully noted and looked at in the future. The second being relative to roofs, flat roofs, may or may not be appropriate in residential areas, and that also is going to be looked at as the form-based code was developed. And I think the third item was, that pops out of my head, so we won't worry about that. So, any other comments other than mine on those meeting minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move to approve the minutes of the March 9th, 2023 special meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Bruce, a second by Matt, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved unanimously. So we're moving on to new business, and basically, as I understand it, we're going to, having spent a lot of time on the village place form-based codes, we're going to discuss in some detail the form-based code, particularly the use table, as it relates to the plan, and whether or not it needs any adjustments, and then from that, we can then move on to more detail on the form-based code. So with that, someone on the planning staff going to direct us there?
That would be me. So, Jack did a great introduction there, so this is kind of going to, I imagine, we're going to follow a very similar process that we did with the village place area. So, step one is, which we've already accomplished, as we've agreed on the regulating plan, which we came to a conclusion and consensus on at the, I think in January, or the first meeting in February. So that's going to be sort of our key, or our legend, that we're going to go from, and like village place, we're just going to go block by block, use by use, hopefully knowing that since we've already been through this exercise one time before, we hopefully still have some sort of memory of some of the uses and discussion, too, with the regulating plan of what we have discussed within those applicable blocks and designated areas. The charge here is, we're going to go through, we're going to see what we think should be outright permitted, and then those that should not be. And then the next step will be, we'll follow suit with getting into the lot standards, the street design, the landscaping, et cetera, again, hoping to have a little more accelerated pace than we did, and hopefully not bog ourselves down too much with, you know, we discussed at nausea, the dry cleaning, animal, veterinarian stuff. Hopefully, in this area, knowing we're not trying to be another extension of the village center itself, this being its own unique area situated within Pinehurst, especially the areas east of Highway 5, the areas west of Highway 5, the large bulk of that is tabbed to be a form of single-family attached and detached and multifamily residential housing. So with that, we'll jump right into Block A, which is kind of the areas where, you may recall with the small area plan, is the core, the core block area. So with that, you see, too, at the very top of the use table, that Maria has worked through for us and we're thankful for, the top, the use types, 1, 2, and 3, so that would be the mixed-use, office, and retail. So those are the very generic type uses, and now we're going to pare those down within the use table, and staff has taken a stab at what our existing use table, based on what those definitions are, and where we think they fall into the, those use types defined by the regulating plan. Also, I want to mention, with the village place plan, we agree that we're just going to merge live, work, and mixed-use to keep out any confusion with the two. We haven't done that yet with the regulating plan with Pinehurst South, but we will, so anytime you see a 1 or a 4, just consider them to be the same, so we'll have the same uses for both of those.
And I mentioned something, when I went through this, it seemed to me, I was able to understand it better by looking at the use and then looking where the use is allowed...
You want to go row instead of column?
Using the rows rather than the columns. That way, you can say, well, this type of use is only allowed here and there, and it's sort of, to me at least, it made sense that way, it was faster in my mind to get it...
It might keep a better focus on the specific use. Would you like to try that approach, folks? Are we good with that? All right, so let's start with residential, then. We'll go, this should be pretty easily, right? We've only got, what, Blocks E and H are only two where we designate this type of residential, so, single-family, two-family...
And E is exclusively...
Single-family.
Single-family, okay.
Exclusively single-family detached.
Detached, excuse me, yep. Do you want people just pipe in as they...
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the table, I feel like we kind of, like we've kind of already got it nailed.
Permit me, and please, please keep your answers short.[604.29][604.29](LAUGHING) And I apologize, because I really wasn't here, I won't use that lame excuse for long, but can you give me a background rationale as to, you draw a distinction between single-family detached, and then some of the other blocks adjacent to that, they're allowed to be attached? I mean, just what you're thinking? Anybody?
But the single-family attached would...
Not quarreling, I just want to understand, that's all.
So there, maybe I didn't understand the question, so they're only, single-family attached are only allowed in Block H? Yeah, so what's the difference between the attached and the detached? Okay.
Why are you permitting attached in some other areas, but not in this area?
I believe a lot of that came out of the discussion with the board and with village council, with the adoption of the small area plan. I think, and before you came on, when we were reviewing the small area plans, which can, the form-based code is, you know, a little bit more detail, there were two different options, more like a low-intensity, and then there's a high-intensity option. The high-intensity option, and a lot of that was, a lot of considerations, market considerations, called for a lot more single-family attached throughout the area, especially on the area east of Highway 5 and much, just north of the Olivia Lane, but out of discussions, council, it's just not the type of development that we wanted on that side, but the attached and the multifamily type use is more appropriate on the west side of Highway 5.
Yeah, the, this is no more than a reflection of the agreed-to small-area plan, which was discussed quite a bit, I think, in council and elsewhere. Once the small-area plan formulated where the various dwelling types and business types and uses would be, this, the regulating plan reflects that. I mean, this is really no more than a reflection of the vision of the small-area plan, if that makes sense.
Some of it is matching closely what's already there, so, I mean, a good amount of this is similar to development that's there, but clarifying it, I mean, and Block H, there is already, multifamily is already there, at least in some capacity, so it's expanding that, so I think some of that we use as guidance on what makes sense there.
More compatible with the existing environment.
And adjacent to either existing or being built, single-family.
Which is another, which was another reason in why we didn't, near, in the Block E areas, and somewhat of Block, well, yeah, both of those are Block E, where we didn't propose anything other than residential units, so we're kind of sympathetic to the neighborhood, the Jackson-Hamlet neighborhood, just to the south.
Seems a little more restrictive than what I remember. I don't know if this is a statement or question, but if you have mixed-use, that would probably be more of a transient-type resident, more rental than ownership, I think, right? So again, if we want this to be an area where you live and work, are we being too restrictive in only having more mixed-use, which I'm going to make a big assumption, those are rentals versus owner-occupied places?
Well, mixed-use can be more, can be, you know, retail and business, it can be more than just residential and something else. It can be other types of mixed-use.
Can be live-work, you know, so that...
That's, that's what I'm thinking, at the, you know, first floor, second floor, you know, first floor is your, you know, barber shop, whatever it may be, retail, second floor is housing.
Or retail on the first floor, and professional office, buildings, offices on the second floor.
Yeah, sure.
So it is any variety of mixed uses.
I, you do find the whole building being owned by one person, it's their business and it's their home, so it's not always transient.
I guess my vision of what we were moving towards, I didn't see that, you know, but, you know, I would just look at it, you know, do we have, do we have enough, you know, owner-occupied areas identified, whether it be, you know, a single, multi, or two, I guess really, single or two-family, you know, i.e. duplex, in the areas, because now we're, you know, I think the desire all along was to have live-work areas. It looks like we're moving towards more work area in most of the areas, places they live and work area.
There's only...
Am I looking at this wrong?
There's only so much, if we allow for it, that will allow for that potential and that opportunity, but we won't be able to necessarily dictate to that specific, you know, who the tenant or who the user itself will be. A lot of those will be considerations, market considerations, finance considerations, we're, and we're kind of, now we're kind of, we're really backing out of what the exercise is, and we're getting back into the higher level that we've kind of already decided as the overall type of mixed-use here, the more residential areas there, and two, it's to create that little bit of that lively type, especially in that core area, in that core Block A. So I, I don't know how we address the concern without rehashing...
No, I'm on board, I got you, you know, and I think one question I asked a couple sessions ago is, did we ever try to figure out what the population would be, you know, just to, I mean, would you set a goal, we expect 10 people, you know, to live here in this area, or is it 110? You know, to create the atmosphere or environment that we were trying to achieve? And, I mean, I know it's, that's kind of, starts backing out, you're getting at a macro level, but, you know, I think there was a consensus on what we were trying to achieve, and that would be, people are living and working in this area within the prescribed balance of what you're trying to achieve, and I guess maybe the way we have it set up right now, we have fewer people living there and more, more business, which is okay, I mean...
I believe actually, this, the regulating plan, the way we're looking at it here, anticipates a lot more residential than initially was sent to council as the Pinehurst South, quote, preferred plan, which had just about no residential...
On the east side, yeah.
And then, and council came back and said, no, we want a better mix, we want some single-family detached, and some significant amount of ability to do some multifamily, and so they actually inserted, if you will change this, quite a bit to insert more residential in this area.
If you look at the two, again, those two options in the small-area plan, for the quote-unquote preferred build-out, I think what was ultimately approved in the plan was probably a pretty good balance or mix between the two, as far as the number of, number of dwelling units versus number of square foot of retail space. So it kind of fell somewhat in between, I don't have the exact numbers, but it was, it was somewhere in between the two. It's probably as good of a detail as we can probably get to, considering what we have.
Right, yeah. Okay, no, thank you.
This is just a formatting comment, because they're always what I notice, but the colors between this and this are slightly, they just didn't print the same, so I'm sure in the, when it's all together, they'll be matched, but...
And we...
I'm tripping my eyes out to, which is...
I tried to match them as best I could, but I need to get the exact numbers for each one, so...
Yeah, 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 minor, pretty minor.
And we probably won't go with anything that is, we'll probably follow suit with the more applicable land use color category, like we have with our official zoning map, so it's not as, maybe as bold, but for our exercise, it has been helpful to know that we're going to purple, we're going to blue, but yeah, it, once we get to the official zoning map, and what that proposed amendment will look like, and the corresponding, we're not going to have a use table like this in the PDO.
Bet.
Yeah, I mean, it will follow, I mean, you're just going to look at Block A.
Yeah.
It probably won't be a color here, but it's just, it's helped, it's a visual aid at this point, but thank you.
Thank you.
Good thing they didn't run out of colored print cartridges, we'd really be in a mess.
Not yet.[1216.33][1216.33](LAUGHING) For next special meeting, we will.
Two X's will go up to cover the printing costs here.[1223.26][1223.26](LAUGHING)
All right, so, again, we look at Block H, where we have all the single-family attached, detached, multifamily, townhomes are all permitted, the single-family dwellings in Block E permitted, and then the mixed-use dwelling, so, again, I think, I think the table is right on, right on point.
No comment on that section?
All right, we're good, right? Lodging, this shouldn't take long either. Block B is where we show lodging use for a hotel, and you see that falling in the applicable column B there next to the hotel row.
What about bed and breakfast?
What about bed and breakfast, Matt? What kind of thoughts you got?
I thought that was a good way to put that. Should that be something that would be considered also in Block B, or, I'm trying to remember what we did, and, I mean, I know it's a different area, but how we considered applicability and...
I think we were looking in that area, maybe the larger footprint, probably more than the smaller footprint, you know, the different type of, I want to say, scale or architectural or feel, the bed and breakfast versus more commercial, even though bed and breakfast is commercial, but, you know, we think maybe bed and breakfast, like the old one, Jack helped me with the name here...
This'll do.
And would that be a beautiful one, too, right here at Magnolia and Chinklepan, near Mystic Cottage.
Magnolia.
Magnolia, well, and the one across, on the other side, on the other side of Chinklepan, I think, at the corner.
Mystic Cottage.
That's it, yes, thank you. You know, something like that, in a more sort of residential setting than the commercial setting.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, okay.
Can we eliminate halfway house since we're not allowing it?
We, a little, a little history on our use table, and hopefully we will pick this up with our comprehensive update of the PDO, based on case law and a few other things. We need to, what we should do is, we should actually show X's where something is not permitted, and show something like a check mark where it is permitted, so it clearly shows that a use, so, for this exercise, is look at the table, if it's, if it doesn't have an X in it, it's not allowed, so it is, it's a little backwards.
Well, I don't know, I've looked at a few PDOs, and they all seem to be similar, you know, where allowed by use, or by right, there's an X, or something to that effect.
Is the case that...
The halfway house is really specific.
It is, and it's, and that's a, that's sort of a statewide definition there.
It is a case that it's, it is allowed, there's just no zoning districts where it's allowed.
It's not permitted by right. Without, an absence of an X, it is not permitted.
So you couldn't have a, you couldn't have a use that's permitted without a zoning district where it's permitted, right? Like, so Southern Pine says we can have a homeless shelter, but they don't designate what zone it's allowed in, you have to have a zoning, does that make sense? It seems like kind of a way to get around having something that you've allowed.
I don't want to speak to that, I have differing thoughts on that, but...
But if you would define it, you could, you could request a variance, though, if it wasn't presently zoned.
Unusual to have a conditional use for a use that's not in the use table, though, but it's conceivable.
Isn't there one at Shadow Lawn that was talked about over and over and over and over?
Not anymore, is it?
We got rid of it?
I think it got rid of itself.
Oh, thank you, thank you, I'm gone to check on it.
Don't.
Definitely can't live with it.
All right, office and service, this is, this one might take a bit of time here.
Office and service?
All right, so, we're going to work on getting a general office-type use definition, and then placing it here in the use table, but our office use type is number 2, and we have those in Blocks A, Blocks B, Block C, Block D. We've got it in F, G, and I, so, to me, the larger difference between all of those would be maybe Block I, which is the areas owned by the Quell Haven properties, just south of Monticello there, which we're planning for in the, in the event that that road is realigned, we're going to kind of plan for both case scenarios. We might want to consider some different type of offices there, that we, or maybe not as wide of range of offices there as we might would in the other areas. Also, keep in mind, when we're going through this, you know, we talked about sort of like golf-related industry type, or professional offices related to golf industries or companies, so keep that in mind, and obviously, we talked a lot about that in the, in the C and B Block area.
Now, this isn't cast in stone for 50 years, I mean, who knows, in a few years, should circumstances change, the table can be changed.
Just as any other amendment, sure can, yeah, as a desire, or whatever, whatever the changes are in the, in the area or the economy at the time.
I have two questions, or maybe three. With regard to Block I, I noticed every other block allowed, or at least, you know, that similar type of act, condition, allowed for dry cleaning and laundry services, and yet it was not permitted. There's no X in I for laundry and dry, was there a reason that we don't want it on that road, or...
I think part of that was, you know, is kind of more the vision of kind of what we've seen along Trotter Hills, you know, may, maybe a bank, maybe a lawyer's office, just to kind of, because those are, maybe they're just shy of an acre, but I think they're pretty close to an acre in size, so, like a little, not generating maybe as much traffic in and out, maybe not a seven-day-a-week type generator, maybe more of a Monday-through-Friday professional services type, but if...
It sort of stands out in my mind, it's the only item that's left out of, well, if there was thought behind it, I'm fine. The other question is, funeral homes doesn't show as allowed anywhere, and yet there exists, of course, a funeral home in Block A.
And I'm pretty sure that mirrors our existing use table, right? That's how, that's how our existing uses are, so, if that, certainly if that's something we feel like we need to allow, obviously, again, there's one that's existing, that's unconforming, and it's allowed, but do we want to continue or allow for that, that type of use in the Pinehurst out there, so I think that's worth a discussion.
Yeah, I think that seems reasonable, especially since there's one there, and doesn't seem to conflict with...
Not a high-traffic generator in general. I would...
It's not...
Hopefully.
Do we have good definitions of manufactured housing and magic, manufacturing home park? Because that's a type of, that's a way you build, not necessarily a use.
The manufactured housing matches the HUD definition, basically, it's got to be, the HUD definition, it's got to be built to those, those standards after, what, '72, I think, is when the, those regulations came in, so yeah, we have a, we have a concrete definition for manufactured home, and then the park, I think, is based on the number.
Not permitted anyways.
No, but we do allow them in our five district, which is, surrounds much of the southern portion of this, of this planned area. So funeral homes, where do you think, what blocks do you think we, does the group think we should maybe look at permitting? Standing out to me, maybe potentially even Block G, even though there's already a lot of existing spaces there, Block B, I don't know about the core area there, and Block A, Block C, Block I, maybe Block D.
I think Block C might be an area.
I just think it ought to appear so. I just think it ought to appear somewhere, it doesn't seem, I mean, since one's existing, I just question why we're totally disallowing it as a permitted use throughout the entire Pinehurst South area. Yeah, I recommend that, I think that's a good suggestion. Funeral home in A is an X, okay?
Ed nods.
Yeah.
And hopefully we never go there for a long time.
Radio, TV, studio, is that intentional to allow it in I but not in any other? Seems like it might overall be in...
It's probably what, again, with our existing use table, it's probably allowed in the OP zoning, which is that base zoning, and the other zoning is probably neighborhood commercial. Maria has hers handy, you want to, will you see what our current definition for radio slash TV studio is? And see if that helps us, it, maybe we want to omit it from I as well. That's kind of a, sort of a corridor now, if you will, I don't know if we...
The definition is a broadcasting facility of a television, radio, cable television provider, or other programming provider, which shall not include transmitting towers or antenna on site.
Okay, so we're not dealing with a huge tower coming in there, so that's good.
It's unusual to locate a facility in a high, you know, expensive area, because it can be placed anywhere, you know, because you're just broadcasting from that point. So, it's unlikely someone would want to spend the money to build a radio studio in the middle of the most expensive real estate in Pinehurst. But, what, you recommend that it ought to be included in some way, Matt?
Well, it's interesting without a tower, because I'm like wondering how much can a radio station do without a tower?
Yeah. Equipment's smaller these days.
It's true, it is, it's all wireless now, so...
It's an internet blog.
I mean, it doesn't seem like it would, it would be a terrible location, I mean, obviously, there's a few in Southern Pines, but, it's, if it's a small enough footprint, it's gonna take a lot of businesses to fill this area, so a polite, less restrictive on business front might be better, but...
We got six blocks, or six quote-unquote lots in Block I, and it seems like the way we define that already, we're basically prohibiting without outright prohibiting it.
I'm okay with leaving it there.
Okay.
I thought small equipment repair and small engine repair was, you know, permitted in all those locations, that seems a bit odd. Just because of what is required, and, you know, you're gonna have testing of equipment running. If you're repairing something, usually it's in, you know, older disarray. I mean, just, I mean, it's, you know, obviously, it's needed, but I just don't see a great demand for it.
I would certainly support, now looking at it, I would support removing it from Block A for sure.
I see, we see it as a component of, potentially of a hardware store, so if you were to get a hardware store down here, I'm fine with not Block A, but, yeah, but there might be some where it would be just a component of that service and...
Block...
How would a hardware, how would a hardware store be characterized in this, is it in retail?
I would say general retail.
And if they, as a part of their service, offered small engine repair, skill dealer or something like that, and they repaired chains or something like that, how would that be characterized?
Meaning you can, you know, we also work on your weed eaters, your lawn mowers.
Exactly.
Was, how, I'm gonna keep those definitions handy.
It's, it is in a retail store, as an example.
What was that, Matt?
In the definition for retail store, it lists hardware store as one of the...
What about the small, okay, so I think if that's their primary, this is more, and these are all primary uses, so this is...
Oh, so it wouldn't necessarily...
Certain percentage of business would, yeah.
Okay, well, that clarifies it.
Then I'm fine.
So, small equipment repair rental, you think we're good, Blocks B, Blocks F and G is permitted?
Not A.
Yes.
Odd. So specific, did somebody have trouble with that?
Yes, they, they became very popular about 15 years ago in the state and have been pretty well made illegal, but that...
They still exist.
They tend to pop up and hang around for a few months and then move and go to another spot for a few months and...
Popular one.
Every time you've ever dri, I've ever driven by one, it doesn't matter what time of day, the parking lot seems full.
But he's lucky.
Okay.
No tears.
Alright, we're making some good traction here. I'm on to the top of second page then, where we pick up at small engine repair. Again, I think we need to get that out of Block A, which would again, kind of mirror the, the same with small equipment, B, F, and G.
Where is the veterinary service? Veterinary service. Yeah, no. And we're gonna allow that?
Indoor channels, which is significantly different, doesn't allow for outdoor channels, is that correct?
They can still be pretty noisy. I'm just, you know, and, and they'll still have to have an area outside to let the dogs or cats or whatever, animals outside, so that is kind of a little bit... I'm a pet lover, so I, I'm not against pets, but I think we need to kind of keep that in mind.
Most of these uses and the tables are very consistent with our current zoning, is that correct?
Current underlying zoning, yeah, because again, you gotta think a lot of, a large portion of this area is either neighborhood commercial or office and professional.
Okay.
Which would permit both by right. Or would be permitted in both of those districts by right. But if we need to pare this back, I mean, we, this is, this is why we have in this exercise. Maybe not, and maybe, again, maybe not in Block A, but if, if there's going to be a green space there in Block C, take the dog to walk, or the cat.
Want it in Block I?
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking.
Block I might be, I mean, again, they're larger lots, you know, they, you do have the retirement, the Quell Haven Retirement Village there next to it.
Yeah, that would be...
I don't know how they feel about it.
Problematic.
It could be.
Yeah, it would be therapy animals, there you go.
Yeah, I mean, I think the image with the court, the center green area in one of the pictures in the plan, and, you know, it's like one of those places people would stop by, drop off the cat, and go get a haircut, that kind of thing.
I think it's a convenience to have it in there, especially for the people who reside there. You're going out of town, you just walk across the street, drop the dog off, or just, I think that's just one of those conveniences in being in a multi-use type of neighborhood.
And thinking down the road here, I mean, I'm probably getting ahead of myself, is that the way this is actually gonna be implemented, if the site plan requires a conditional zoning, you have a chance to look at it...
Parry them back. You couldn't add any uses that weren't permitted into it, but you could certainly start to cross out uses. If they're become, if it became, oh, I would, I would like that, because yes, that would be a, you know, that would be something I would want in a community coming here, or if the adjacent properties were just adamantly opposed to having that type of use nearby. We can probably move right on past the sexually-oriented business and head right into the ABC store. I'm saying they're related, but they are seated next to each other in the...
Are we getting full of fun?
That one we wait, I think we need to have a discussion about when we get there, but, ABC store, obviously, we're showing it permitted and everywhere where there's a mixed-use or a retail use type one or three. Obviously, we have one already in the area that was still in the area and relocated to the other side of the area. So it's likely not to relocate again, but who knows? Okay, so, amusement's indoor, alright, so there's, there's some, let's give some thought to this. Things have evolved a little bit, we have a pretty broad definition, but, you know, popular now are like indoor arcades, either adult-oriented arcades, meaning, you know, where pizza and beer are served, for instance, instead of just where kids can go to a Chuck E. Cheese type, type place. And also, some, some, like, indoor golf-type facilities have become very popular as of late. So give that some real consideration when we, when we look at these blocks.
Wouldn't necessarily be a primary use, I mean, a lot of the retail golf shops, you know, Dick's and so forth have places to go, essentially, you can...
Small simulator, yeah.
Simulators, you can actually play a game of golf on a, on a course and so forth, but it's not their primary.
And there's, it's get, yeah, situation, or businesses like that, or operations like that are becoming very popular, and they have a, a larger footprint, or, you know, say, the retail footprint of a Dick's Sporting Goods, for example, that entire footprint would be devoted to, you know, however many parties can fit in, where, you know, you all, there's maybe food or beverage that are served, too. You have parties, you host parties there.
Have you been presented with this? May I ask that question?
Maybe over the past few years, it's come up a time or two, and it's something that would be allowed in some of our zoning districts.
But you haven't been approached recently?
The question has been posed, but I don't, I think it was more of just feeling out the general area. I mean, I think, considering that we're in Pinehurst, I think it's very legitimate that somebody would, at some point, propose some type of use here.
My big question always is, for any use, is it consistent with adjacent uses?
What kind of negative impacts may be...
Or does it transition very well to an adjacent use? I mean, if it's a type of use that is hard up against a, you know, a residential area, and may or may not be consistent, I, to me, that's the deciding factor, I'd like to see some transition or graceful movement, direction or another.
Obviously, you can see Block G, which is going to be totally abutting residential area, aside from the Pinehurst coins there across from Trotter Drive, right? So, so maybe, maybe we wouldn't want to consider it in Block G. Maybe the same in, in Block D. The core block, again, A, that's a much smaller footprint type retail traffic and things we want there, so probably not there. Perhaps Block B and C, those, those might be the two areas we want to consider it.
Yeah, I mean, for what it's worth, I think, and I know the outdoor is not, you know, based on the current zoning, it's not in any locations, but the images that we have in this small-area plan, to me, this kind of thing could be an option in this area. It's a draw to bring people here, to create some of what is in this plan.
The miniature golf course up at Olmstead Village, is that just classified as outdoor recreation or retail, what is it?
I haven't seen, I don't, I'm not real familiar, yeah.
That's Taylor Town.
Oh, that's Taylor Town, okay.
But yes, we would consider outdoor recreation like a golf course, maybe, which our definition of golf course doesn't allow for putt-putt. But yes, an outdoor recreation is, would be like a putt-putt type facility.
About batting cages?
I think I would classify that, without reading the definition, I mean, I would consider batting cages, I would consider tennis courts. I would consider all those outdoor recreation. So where do we land on the, on the indoor amusements? And that's, that's recreation, these are outdoor amusements, alright? So you look at what outdoor amusements.
Outdoor establishments that provide commercial recreation activities primarily outdoors, such as miniature golf establishments, go-kart facilities, theme parks, carnivals, fairgrounds, and midways, paintball parks, and water parks.
Go-karts?
That's, that's outdoor.
That's the outdoor.
Okay.
It's outdoor amusement, not recreation. Recreation would be the golf course, the tennis courts, things like that. The difference is here that, you know, putt-putt or mini-golf is typically seen as amusement, it's gimmicky, if you will. There's real windmills and things.
The recreation facilities' outdoor definition also includes mini-golf in it, in that definition, so I guess it...
You can do it in either one?
Could be either use, yeah.
Correct?
That use also includes, like, the outdoor theaters, tennis courts.
And that's the recreation? Is, what about, theaters permitted in the outdoor amusement? I didn't hear you read it.
Like ample theaters?
Yeah.
Parks, paintball, no.
Okay.
I look, you know, at the bottom, it does say theater, and one of the notes I wrote is like, outdoor, you know, it's starting to become very common to have a small area for an outdoor theater. I mean, I don't know if that would fall in the amusement outdoor, or...
Sounds like it was the outdoor recreation. So we'll, we'll get to that one, I think, once we get to the...
You're gonna clarify your indoor amusement? What, what, what have you concluded now with respect to the indoor amusements?
Indoor would be commercial...
Not the definition, but the...
The blocks, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, that's what I was trying to get to, I mean, again.
Helping, yeah. Ballin' Pac-Man.
I think keep it, and you were saying take it, maybe take it off of A, is that what you were saying?
Leave it in the other.
Don't you want to take it from D? I think the question that Jack raised was, what would it potentially be adjacent to? And perhaps you don't want it adjacent to your residential.
Which would be G, take, removing it from Block G as well.
Keeping it on the east side, basically, south of Lake Boulevard.
What about Block D? Block D will be up against residential, too, so maybe remove it from Block D.
Actually, across the street. There's a big difference between being there and having the railroad tracks and the improved Route 5. Not as adjacent as it is today, as a matter of fact.
So that would leave us permitted?
You've got the businesses along Route 5, too, so it's a transition.
That would give us indoor amusements permitted in Blocks B, C, and F.
Good, okay.
Alright, outdoor. Matt wants the outdoor theater in Block A. Because Matt is looking, he is, he's looking at the, I'm gonna say not adopted, I want to call it the approved, small-area plan and the detail plan, Matt, is what you had, right, for those, that core block that you were referencing back, which is, meaning he's doing his homework.
Is that amusement? You were saying theater, I don't see an outdoor theater listing here.
It's covered in the definition of outdoor amusement.
Outdoor amusement, okay, got it.
Well, theater is actually, sorry, is an outdoor recreation.
Okay.
So, I know we read both, but it, recreation may fit it better, I mean, outdoor recreation is currently not allowed by the zoning, so we'll have to address that one when we get there.
So the outdoor amusements were the, the theme parks, the water parks, the mini-golf, and the like, is that right, Maria? That was outdoor amusements?
Yeah, for out, for amusements outdoors.
Okay.
Probably get what you want in the small-area plan with recreation out, or outdoor recreation, and keep outdoor amusement as you have it, and not permanent in your...
I think so.
Okay, on, on to the, the pool hall discussion, like we had at Village Place, we wish Julia was here so we could hear more stories of her time spent in those.
Again, these are primary uses.
Primary, again, I don't know how many, I don't want to speak, I don't think it's a likelihood, I don't know how these businesses would be solely operating as a... I think that, that time has maybe passed. It may come back.
I knew Paul was gonna have it.
It is.
But we want to keep it there.
Exactly.
They're gonna hang out with Matt.
Let's leave it like you have it.
We should, we should take a field trip one day, okay. Alright, what about our barn, tavern, pub, slash nightclub, whatever we want to call it?
Can they have, like, outdoor seating in any of these? Because, I mean, that's, I think, the end thing, too, now. Cause, I mean, that's, I think, the end thing too now, so we should kinda plan for that.
Rooftops, that's very popular now.
Tops or gardens.
Microbrewery.
We don't, we don't allow that, as a primary use.
I heard.
That fall in that category of bar, I mean, wouldn't that fall in the category of bar tavern or?
Not, not solely as a, what's the definition of bar, let's see if it's encompassing enough that they, if it's just, you just have to sell alcoholic beverages.
Oh, here we go, okay. Business where alcoholic beverages are sold for onsite consumption, which are not, not part of a larger restaurant, includes bars, taverns, pubs, and similar establishments, where any food service is subordinate to the sale of alcoholic beverages. May also include beer brewing as part of a microbrewery and other beverage tasting facilities. Entertainment, including live music, indoor dancing, comedy, et cetera, may also be included.
Right. Garden center, which apparently we don't want. It's not there, so, do we wanna?
Fresh my memory, for me, the, the outdoor market park that's in the plan. Are, are we pushing that in any area here?
The, it's in the Block A, Matt, do you have the, uh, that detail rendering there? I think you, I thought you had it a minute ago.
This one?
That's the one.
Have outdoor sales and all kinds of.
So yeah, so that's more, that's right here.
Okay. Just curious, I couldn't.
What's her definition? This is a great exercise in learning all our uses and how they're defined.
Didn't remember.
A retail outlet primarily engaged in the sale of crops, plants, vines, or trees and their seeds, but not including the production of such plants on site. Such uses may be part of a larger, general, commercial uses, or may stand alone as individual facilities.
So you could have a farmer's market there.
Yeah, not like a nursery.
I think this should be allowed, particularly because of residential.
See how that got the discussion out, okay, so where do we want it?
Likelihood, in this, in this area, with the amount of land, you know, that you would very, very small.
I mean, a garden consent, I, I think a garden center could also be less than a thousand square foot that sells, you know, shrubs, plants, whatever, you know, it's not, it's not a fenced facility that has, yeah.
Oil and little garden tools, or whatever.
Where they're buying them down there and marking them up.
You, you, you could have a, a, a hardware type store that also has, you know, it has other areas where you can go get vegetable, vegetable plants during that time of year.
That's what they have over by Lowe's.
You know, if we're gonna allow small engine repair sales, stuff like that, I mean, most will have a garden center in there too.
That makes sense.
Alright, so all, in all our retail spots?
Yep.
Yeah. Could we have an amphitheater in there, a small amphitheater?
Maybe that's the outdoor recreation.
That, that sounds like where that would go in, but.
Good idea.
That's outdoor recreation.
There would be a lot of transient vendors, whatever. Which, it's fine. Food trucks and stuff like that.
Okay, general retail, I think we kinda know we're gonna drop those everywhere we say number three, so I think we can, we're not gonna have any golf courses, we don't want the internet sweepstake facilities, although Sonia likes the flashing bright lights. So this, that lands us at outside sales, and I'm looking at Maria again.
Alright, I was already starting to look for it.
Very broad term, obviously.
Alright, outside sales, the retail sale of goods and products outside of a permanent structure that are clearly secondary to the function contained in that structure.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
This includes, but is not limited to, landscape materials, lawn and garden supplies, and produce. The def, this definition is not intended to include the specific use category of automobiles, sales, or nurseries, and garden centers.
Separate from those.
I'm trying to envision what outside sales is then, to tell you the truth, I mean.
Office space, right?
Well, it's, it's.
It sounds like that's the primary use, is to have all your wares and activity, sales activity outside the dwelling, is that?
It says it's allowed as, as basically part of a subordinate function of the main.
But it's a different product, right?
Uh, no. Just sale of goods or products outside of the permanent structure, that are clearly secondary to the function contained in that structure.
It'd be like an insurance agency deciding to sell apples outside.
What about oranges?
For sure.
Maybe it's best we just don't allow it then, to create any confusion.
Process up with the outside sales. Thinking about, and Paul probably can understand that more, every little town in Europe has a little outside area where they actually have some little permanent stalls, kind of things.
These aren't flea markets or anything, cause that if I go.
No, 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 they're not for flea markets, they're just for like Christmas markets, or for the seasonal fruits, um, you know, local crafts. I mean, it has to be more specific than a flea market, but I think that is something we really could use here, and it also would attract other people besides just.
Well, there is a farmer's market use that's somewhere else in the table that might fit that, what you're saying.
Right.
That's probably more a, a civic use, maybe, yeah.
Cause that, this would, maybe what you're saying, or what I'm thinking of at least, is it may not be tied to a business, it could be somebody coming and setting up, which fits more farmer's market.
But even if the village somehow incorporated that.
We have it here, and we have it over at the.
Well, we have it over at, that's not, it's not a very.
Yeah, it's temporary.
Yeah, it's a temporary, I mean, I'm visualizing something, like with all these outdoor plans that we're seeing, something that fits into that. You know, where people bring their wares, but they pay a little rent to use that particular spot, and I, I really think that we need to think of that because we all do want more fresh vegetables and stuff, and it would also support the farmers, you know.
But maybe it's something we, we tackle outside of the small area plan, maybe it's something we have to look at, I mean, we might need to, again, our, our, our use table and our definitions need a terrible overhaul, so maybe that's where we address it.
Think about that, please.
Yeah, cause, so farmer's market actually says temporary.
Alright, but I think we should have a little more permanent, because that's one of the reasons that we're losing some of these people coming in with, you know, to the farmer's market, like in the village, because it's difficult for them to set up the tables and set up all that, and then when it gets hot, they've gotta have the tent parts and stuff, so if we had something that, you know, we could find some rural areas, like Chapel Hill, places that already have that kinda stuff.
So again, that's something we'll have to do a little, quite a bit more research and see what other communities have, what it looks like.
Let's kinda keep that in mind when we're thinking of this area.
Would it, or could it fit into the category of retail sales? So that you have the ability to incorporate it into, and I know that there are places in other communities that have restaurants or coffee shops, that they then set aside thirty, forty percent of that indoor facility for, uh, farmer market, um, concessions, if you will, and they are full-time, um, enterprises.
Where do we account for big box retail? Or is it not even mentioned?
General retail.
You know, Target, Lowe's, places like that.
It'd be just a general retail.
Southern Pines. Everything.
Southern, that, that's fine, I, I almost just think there should be some kinda category here and not showing them permitted.
Oh, so to, to outright prohibit, and you, and you can do that through, and we will probably get there with our architectural standards, and you could get through it with bulk limitations, size limitations.
I could see one of those concerns, Walmart or something, wanting to go along five down here.
I can see like, maybe, I know there's, there's one close by, but, you know, like, you can see those, those Ace or True Value type hardware types stores, much smaller footprint, architecturally, they, they, they don't have a franchise type architecture, other than their, their signage typically.
They amalgamate.
What's that?
That's the right word.
You know, they get away with a lot of things, like, in, you know, the parking requirement generally is based on the highest Christmas time.
Day after Thanksgiving, yeah.
And so then they store all their boats, or their.
Trails.
You know, out there, and that's where they sell them from.
And that's gonna be the beauty part of the conditional zoning requirement, we're gonna be able to hopefully nail that down. Alright, pawn shops. Okay.
There's a road that goes right to Fayetteville.
Alright, racetrack, alright, restaurant.
Dogger Corner.
Freedom range, alright, theater.
I only have one question on theater, uh, this is indoor, um, is it possible to have a, um, special requirement for this use, such that it would limit the size of the theater? Rather than a megaplex type of thing, it might be a, uh,
Arts and.
Or a arts and, um, you know, sunrise type of thing, or?
Well.
Either sized by number of seats and/or something like that, in other words, add a special requirement, allow it in some place, but put a special requirement against it.
Restrictions.
Yeah.
Yeah, certainly.
So the definition for civic cultural facilities, which is coming up next, is facilities designed to serve a community promoting cultural advancements, include live theater, dancer, musical establishment, galleries, studios, museums, exhibits, other facilities.
There's an overlap there, it could be, yeah.
So you could, i- if size is a concern with indoor theater, you could probably, I don't know, if you think what Jack's talking about would fit under civic cultural.
So, so yeah, that sounds, that's probably more what we would be after, the theater indoor, a- and I, I think Maria and I discussed this yesterday, the definition does, does include like, real movie theaters, but you don't, again, it, it would, maybe that's okay if there's a, a limitation on, on, on the area.
So could we have in that, like, the art museum, the art center, something of that sort?
With the civic cultural facility, the, the definition that Matt read, yeah.
Why don't we put that in the definition, I didn't see it written there, maybe I missed it.
I think Matt's right, it, this would fold nicely into the civic cultural facilities, at least what I was thinking in my mind, uh.
Okay, well, so.
It may not be necessary to get complicated in this particular use.
Where do we wanna see our civic cultural facilities?
Now, that's a good question. I'm not sure, I understand why they're excluded everywhere.
Same places retail?
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree.
So that would put us with A, B, C, D, F, G.
Really be good, cause you have the right.
Alright.
Every place but E and, and, and or, um.
H.
H.
And I, probably.
And maybe I.
Okay, do we wanna put it, well, nevermind, I'm thinking of the people in Arnett Street, we don't wanna put anything in F like that, I don't think. Remember, we talked about that, to kind of preserve their neighborhood.
They might enjoy it, that might be a, a, the small enough footprint. Music, dinner and a show. Alright, community share facilities, Maria, remind us what, what, what kinda definition we have for that?
Public baths.
Alright, uh, facilities designed to serve as amenities for residential neighborhoods. Such facilities are typically operated by homeowners associations or similar groups, and provide recreational space within the context of that residential neighborhood.
Site plan.
But, so let's, for now then, let's leave it like it is, let's permit it in, in H, that's the most realistic spot, you know, have a, you can have a clubhouse or, or otherwise there, okay?
What about E? Because those are all single family.
They're gonna be single family detached, I mean, it, there might be the option, I know, I mean, we have the, the, uh, the Pinehurst South cottages that's outside of the, the area that we're planning for now, I know at one point, the plan did include maybe a pool and type clubhouse facility there, so maybe we do allow it, um, in Block E as well.
Kinda interesting, cause it's I'd E and the cottages, and already has like business.
But, but this is, again, this is the primary use, I mean, if someone comes along with a plan for E that includes, you know, homeowners association and shared use facilities and so forth, that would all be part of the site plan, that, but that wouldn't be a primary.
And they would be on their, their own separate lot, which would be owned and maintained by the HOA.
But it would, they would still, it would still have to be allowed there, cause like, they couldn't put a, a pool hall on it if they.
No, a pool hall probably, but, uh, you would think a community association would have some type of shared facilities, right?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'm just saying, I think for that, you would have to allow it in the block, I'm thinking, right?
What's open space, is open space a community shared facility? No.
Stormwater areas aren't even considered open space, yeah. It's an amenity.
I was just saying that that community facility could have a billiard table, or a ping pong table.
Exercise center.
Exercise, um, trail. An exercise trail.
It could be inside, outside, yeah, that's right.
I have a hard time putting a use down that I can't describe it crisply, to tell you the truth. And then let it go. Okay?
Leave it as is.
In those facilities, the, the homeowners or the condominium owners di- generally dictate what, what is there, I mean, they, it might be built with just a pool or something, but then they say, hey, you know, we gotta have shuffleboard there too.
We don't have pickleball.
Oh yeah, pickleball. And it's there, I don't know how to handle that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with the definition, community shared, I mean, is that the community, or is that the larger community? Which community are we talking about?
Talking about the development.
Uh, just facilities designed to serve as amenities for residential neighborhoods. So they're typically owner, operated by a homeowners association.
Well, operated by implies to me, at least, that it's restricted use to only those members of that association. It s- it sounds like the definition may need just a little bit of tweaking there to clarify that.
Yeah, cause what if they're having financial trouble and they decide, oh, we'll open it up to the community, and then you start getting people from.
Now it changes the use then, so they might not be able to do that.
Not if it's a community, cause it's kind of a broad definition.
Yeah. Let's tackle that one another time too.
Alright, let's put that one down.
What is a community pool, such as we used to have on Rattlesnake?
Recreation.
Okay, outdoor recreation.
Conference and convention center.
That made sense in the hotel area, right?
Mm-hmm, okay. Country club, I think we can move right along, municipal public surface facility, um, it's outside of this planning, um, boundary that we're looking at, so. Private clubs, alright, Maria, you're up. This is a very broad definition here.
Could you, could you read me the definition of country club at the same time then?
Country club, okay, well, let me do, private club first, since I already have that. Uh, facility, facilities designed to provide meeting and event space for nonprofit membership organizations. Such organizations include alumni associations, booster clubs, scouting organizations, ethnic associations, social clubs, fraternal lodge, and veterans' membership organizations, primarily engaged in provo- promoting the civic and social interests of their members.
Boys and girls club?
First T.
And they're right there, aren't they? Yeah, they're right there in what, block B? I can, I mean, I, I can see that in all those general type.
I do, too.
Okay.
So you're gonna load that into B?
That'd be A, B, C, D, F, and G. All right, country club.
Land area and buildings containing golf courses, recreational facilities, a clubhouse, and customary accessory uses, open only to members and their guests for common purposes of a social and athletic nature.
Go further down, Route 5.
I couldn't tell. Must it contain a golf course, or did it say may?
Land area and buildings containing golf courses, recreational facilities, so it doesn't say must.
Public safety station. I'm gonna need that.
Public safety.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna need that definition, because I think we already have it. Yeah, 92, Station 92. Okay. So that could be county EMS, that could be.
Right.
We don't want to permit a satellite facility anywhere.
I think we might would, plus.
But then it would have to be, it would have to be, ownership would have to change, and probably zoning would change.
I don't think, no.
Like, maybe we, I put it in every area.
Yeah.
I mean, I can't think where you wouldn't necessarily want even a fire station, a police substation, whether it's a residential area or a light commercial.
One thing let's consider, too, let's consider, I mean, we're all not public safety professionals, obviously, but you do have a major.
They tend to want to locate on major roads.
You have a major route right there, but we probably wouldn't want to put them, obviously, in, in like block H or block C or anything like that.
How about I?
I might, would be a good location, a good spot for that, Sonya.
That would be an easy in and out than the rest of this.
You don't want them having to, you know, screen through a residential neighborhood on their way out necessarily.
Yeah, I think I makes a lot of sense. It does. You okay with I?
I think, yeah, I mean, there might, there might be some implications with the railroad and crossing there, but, yeah, I don't think there's any harm, certainly.
There's an issue with the railroad crossing.
Haven't heard that one, have we, Jack? All right, public safety, I'm gonna go right and left. I, we didn't think we needed in H. G, I think it's plausible.
Well, we have a fire station in A.
We do. So I hear allow it in A, so we don't create a nonconformity with ourselves, huh?
Right.
B? What about C? Well, we wanted to kind of drive a lot of the, no, got it.
Just keep it out of C.
What is the post office considered, by the way? What is their use, I mean, in the use table, how would you?
Office.
Is it really listed somewhere? Oh, my goodness.
Look at there, no ambiguity in one for a change.
There you go.
You know, the post, post offices.
We need that one ready.
Typical example.
Do we have a definition?
Locating post offices. And they don't care. They will go wherever they want to go. So it's not something you, almost you can't regulate. That the post office, you know, looks for the exact land they want, and they put it there. And you don't have any say about it, so. That's just one thing to consider. They're being, closing them. No, 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 they're not.
All right, we've covered, I think.
All, all federal establishments are like that.
Let's see what indoor recreation facilities brings us. I'm scared to ask.
A facility providing recreational activities enclosed within buildings, including indoor swimming pools and tennis courts, gymnasiums, exercise facilities, and associated activities. Your indoor, indoor pickleball.
To me, at least, except for the residential areas, it's, I find it quite satisfactory. I mean, you can't second guess any of this stuff, but.
All right, well, that's pretty well how we had it teed up. Pun intended, recreation facilities outdoor.
That's a different animal, a little bit.
Need more space typically, you know, lights, sounds.
Right, it tends to, it depends upon what is next, too, also, because it definitely can have an impact on adjoining parcels.
Apparently, the pickleball paddle was very loud. Have you heard, have you heard all the?
You could hear it for miles, unbelievable.
I, I think we need this use down there. I mean, it also includes greenway trails, this is what we talked about, theaters, performance areas, mini golf, playgrounds. I mean, obviously, includes things also like skateboard parks and ball fields, but I think if it's, those will be handled uniquely anyway, so.
So it's too broad a definition? Is that where you're coming from?
Well, the, the mini golf and the ball fields may, well, I mean, there was some discussion at council about ball fields in some of these areas, you know? This is.
No, you could, you could do something by changing the title of this, like recreation facilities civic outdoor, and then recreational activities that, you know what I mean? If, if they're civic.
Currently only allowed in the PC.
Sponsored. All of those things should be.
Recreation facilities outdoors.
I think some of these definitions are starting to become very subjective.
They are, that's correct.
Together.
Right, exactly. I mean, that list included some very questionable activities relative to being next to residential neighborhoods, and some others that are very quite satisfactory, you know, like walking trails and so forth. My goodness, what more would you want?
Could you allow it and then keep it on the shelf for your conditional?
Mm-hmm, be part of that negotiation. I know it's permitted, but I'm, but we were only proposing to do a trail, a playground amenity.
Right.
But unless you discreetly call out those activities that are either objectionable or not objectionable, they're all into this broad category of outdoor facility recreation, and how can you say no?
But the conditional zoning.
King Rangers, where do those go?
We passed those, we said not allowed.
So in a conditional zoning process, even though it fits the broad definition, we can be more restrictive as far as what, within that broad definition, we will allow, is that correct?
Yeah, example, proposing whatever type of development, mixed-use neighborhood, single-family attached, detached swimming pool area here. Then you want to change that swimming pool, and especially if the record shows conditions or even said this cannot be turned into a putt-putt. And then you go and try to turn it into a, you know, a mini golf, I'm sorry, and they're both fit under the same broad definition, and if it was conditioned or it was specifically called out on that general concept plan, and the record showed that that's what it was to be, then that's it.
If you say you can do it, fine. It just seems to me a little problematic to have a broad definition that includes X, Y, and Z of different uses. Someone comes forward and says, I want to use X, Y, and Z, and you say, no, you can't use X.
And the, the other alternative is we live with it not being potentially allowed at all. So it's.
Or change the definitions to be more granular.
Currently on recreation facilities outdoor in the current zoning ta, use table.
PC, RD. What, what is SR?
Athletic fields, common area recreation facilities, and similar, similar facilities.
These are the uses of hours and lights and things, aren't they? I think I recollect that as well now. Yeah.
So fields are permitted, but you can restrict hours of use and lights.
And these are only privately owned, outdoor. Think of Lake Pinehurst, the area there.
Well, if you think you can manage it, fine. It just seems to me.
Thinking about the, the meeting I watched with, or actually, it was the meeting I was at, they run together, when we talked about the campground or camping uses at the Harness Track. How is that, now that we've addressed that, remind me, like, how, I mean, those are allowed, campground is obviously in this outdoor recreation, but it's not. You're not gonna also build a skate park there right now?
No.
That was a little different. That one does have a specific definition aside from the outdoor recreation.
You really could split this into commercial, recreational, and civic.
We do. This definition is all just privately owned.
Which I think is part of the, isn't part of the vision for this area, that a developer would come and, so, I, that's why I feel like, let's allow it where we want it, but then maybe try to bring some restrictions with conditional zoning.
I agree.
To fit the small area plan.
Hey, Dad, add one more level of complexity to this complex situation, anyway, but.
As long as I'm here, I'll remember that very specifically if we got a proposal coming through.
You're not going anywhere.
Well, this is an important.
And neither of you all, either.
Lifetime job.
I know it is.
It's going quickly. The secondhand minute, I'm starting to get.
That's the introduction.
Okay, so, I mean, I, I can see maybe block C, it's more internal, for sure. No real impacts terribly, except for maybe around block E there, the southern portion for the residential areas.
So what have we, where are we putting the Xs? Tell me again.
I'm, only one I've marked down as C.
C.
Space probably either. B would be a little, I think we kind of want to have other things there.
We have the hotel and blah, blah, there.
And same with the A, we want probably a little, well, the.
Yeah, A is a different animal, I think.
But you've got so much existing development there, it may not matter.
So let's just go with C, so then we even further restrict the opportunity.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right, our churches, or, I'm sorry, religious institutions. They're not shown as permitted because the existing use table pretty well only allows them in residential districts, or I believe the OP district as well.
Well, we have a, we have a religious institution already in block H.
And I believe there's one in block F as well.
Pre-existing.
I think it's pretty common, I mean, to have.
Which also would encourage more walking.
Yeah. So put it in the residential.
I would.
In the residential designated areas. What's that, C?
That would be E and H.
Excuse me, E and H?
And then do we want to put one, allow it in F, too, where we know we have that existing church there? I think it's, is it just north or south of Arnett? But it's in that block.
On Trotter.
I'd say, yeah, put it in there, too.
I'd agree.
That's a narrow.
Okay.
All right, park.
Everywhere, parks everywhere.
Right. All right, now we're on page three. Look at us. This is usually where we run out of steam. All right, now we're getting to our institution type uses. Residential care facility, we have one in the area, but not within the area we're regulating, correct? Or do we have?
Well, you'd have to be a little crisper, in my opinion, on, on the, you know, the Quellhaven area. I mean, it's easy to see on the, on the colored map, but it is within the planning area.
What about block I? Since it's adjacent to the Quellhaven areas.
Well, sure, in my opinion, yes.
Okay.
Though they would have to cross, cross the street if block I. Now, block I is going to be there regardless of whether Monticello is moved or not, is that correct?
Bill, it just depends on if it's going to be segregated by.
Lots are there, okay, and they're, they're planted already, actually, aren't they?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it makes sense to have them there.
And they're, again, they're, they're larger size lots, too.
Right. So you're putting residential care facilities in block I, is that correct?
That's what I have.
Okay.
All right, our child and adult daycare centers. Typically, they're allowed in the NC district, so that's where you see the Xs, where you see them.
Right, right.
Again, I think it kind of could allow for that community type, you know, or if you're, what if you even work in the area, it'd be nice to have the, the, you know, the kids right nearby, maybe go have lunch with them or something.
I think, yeah, we need more of those anyway, here.
We have a coworker right now who's trying to find a spot, you know? For the daycare? Yeah, we're showing it, we're, the X's show them, you know, being allowed there, yeah.
Put it in E and H as well, too. I mean, just the convenience of having it.
Maybe you want them close by, but maybe you don't want them in the neighborhood.
I don't, I'm, I'm not seeing these neighborhoods like your typical neighborhood. I'm seeing this as like a, you know.
Working neighborhood.
A more communal neighborhood, maybe, yeah.
That's running a business.
I'm thinking like a DuPont Washington or something, everything's right there in the town. Everybody's house, I mean, everybody's house is gonna look alike, you know, it's, you know, your, your convenience is right there within your, almost in your same block. I mean, I'm done having kids, so it doesn't matter to me, but, yeah, I just think it would be convenient for.
There's a chance you could have a, a community of folks who are maybe also done having kids, maybe even also done having grandkids, and therefore they don't want to hear kids.
They're on their great-grandkids.
So, a daycare center as a commercial enterprise, though, in a residential area would be not necessarily what we would allow, is that correct?
Yeah, what, and, and there's state restrictions and things like that. We'll, we'll leave it.
Okay.
Probably best.
Good try, Paul.
I thought about that, but I think maybe that will allow for more of the office-type stuff there, maybe it's, I did think. Community support facility. I feel like some of these words are starting to run together.
What is that?
Community support facility, a nonprofit or government facility providing personal assistance to individuals in need, such as assistance to individuals, such assistance to individuals may include temporary shelter, food services provisions, counseling, instruction, medical services, and other incidental services.
Would the, the Veterans Assistance Organization in Trotter Hills, which isn't our plan right now, but is that considered a community?
No, it's, it's like a professional services, because they, they consult, they, they're.
For profit.
Yeah.
Oh, it's for, that's right.
Oh, yeah, it's, they're all about making money there.
So I, I, I think.
Beneficial use.
And we have it in I, which I think, reading that, hearing that definition, sounds like, yes, that's your typical office and professional type development, where you hear counseling, you know, we have a counseling-type service that meets that definition over in Trotter Hills as well, that's just about completed. Matt needs to ask one of his coworkers about that, just to get the story. Okay, well, I might can see something like that on block G. I don't, I mean, it, it's a need, but. I don't, I mean, it's a need, but I don't, I don't know that's kinda what we were going for in Block A.
What'd you say, Block which?
G, this is the west side.
That's in Gulf? All along the road there, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. I like it.
I N G. All right, hospital, I think we, that's another small area plan that needs to be developed.
Yeah, but does that communicate, like, an urgent, small urgent care?
I think that's a medical clinic, have we gone past that?
I didn't see that one, did I?
We have it. Office and service, yeah, first page.
Right, sorry.
We allowed that pretty, pretty well across the area, okay. Schools.
I, I need to back up, I'm sorry. You're, you're deferring hospital because you're gonna do a small area plan around the first health?
So, yeah, so when we adopted a 2019 comprehensive plan, there were five, what they called focus areas, that were designated, which the recommendation was to do a more detailed small area plan for those areas. We're doing two now. And obviously, there's three more. One is for the hospital area. Focus area three? I'm looking at Jack because he adopted the plan.
One of them's out on 211, I know that.
Yeah, that's five.
Five, right.
Yep, and we're in two and four here.
Right.
So it must be one or three. No, one is the ETJ, so it must be three.
Right.
So are we precluding a hospital from being established in this Pinehurst South area?
As the table stands at this point, yes.
The footprint is very small out there. They've already outgrown it.
Mm-hmm. They're gonna have a new women's tower coming soon as well. Just had a 120,000 square foot comprehensive cancer center go, they're buying up properties all around them.
What, what is the distinction, the definition between hospital and the medical clinic?
I don't think we have.
Hospital is a healthcare facility and related facilities, the purpose of which is to provide care, treatment, testing for physical, emotional or mental injury, illness or disability, and overnight boarding of patients either on a for-profit or not-for-profit basis, but not including group homes. The facility must be licensed by the North Carolina Division of Facility Services as a hospital.
Sounds like boarding is a key word in there.
Be overnight, stay instead of outpatient type. Walk-in, walk-out.
Right. So a, a walk-in clinic is not a hospital?
Correct.
Are allowing medical clinics in most of these blocks already.
So, so the, I'm just gonna use first health, obviously, because they're very integral to this, this area. First health, convenient care, a first health or orthopedic.
That center, and you name it.
Exactly, yeah.
What is a exercise facility?
Like a rehabilitation?
No, 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 I mean, a, you know.
Gym.
Gym, gym anytime, or whatever.
Planet Fitness.
Planet Fitness, whatever. What is that?
Recreation facilities indoor, I believe, right? Is that where it was?
Azim's on it, so.
Yeah, I think.
Okay. Your head's spinning, I'll tell you that, I don't know about you.
I, I don't know that we've ever been approached, or this was ever been an area of interest where a, a true hospital, as defined and regulated by the state, would want to locate.
It seems like at the scale that a hospital is in this area would, would dominate the area and probably be somewhat different from open green space and walking pedestrians.
I'm looking to invite another, another enterprise. I'm, I'm just looking out for first health. Should they have the need? Resources to acquire.
And I, and I think they would, I think they would have approached us if this was an area that they had tapped as a potential need for them to expand. Schools. Another fun one.
Oh, boy. I mean, with the growth of private school institutions, I'm surprised we don't accommodate it in here somewhere.
And, and keep in mind, they're, they're high-traffic, high-volume of traffic.
Well, you see people lined up, dropping off and taking their kids.
The queuing, yeah, the queuing for those are they're not quick in and out.
Oh, okay. I'm wondering about the schools vocational technical, if that might be a fit, because it's low-traffic, but also, you know, sand, sand hills, or, you know, another.
Maria, help us out with the distinction between the two, please.
Schools vocational technical. A public or private institution for education or learning, including athletic or recreational facilities, which does not include lodging. These schools offer vocational and technical training in a variety of technical subjects and trades. Training may lead to job-specific certification.
This is more post-secondary type.
Real estate school, need more of them, right? Real estate?
Why are we, why are we, what was the thought process not to put them in here?
Just the, the base zoning didn't allow?
Base zoning doesn't allow, okay.
And then, obviously, we, we were able to fill in areas where we knew, obviously a slam dunk, again, these are, these are discussion, very big discussion points.
And the same logic applies to elementary and secondary, the base zoning does not allow, so we started off with nothing in the table.
Correct, and, and again, I, we've never really had those discussions at any point during the small area plan process of, you know, we've talked more about, you know, you know, the hotel here, or, you know, the retail here, mixed-use there, residential here, but not maybe the, I don't think, we've, we've not touched on any institutional uses at all.
And I sort of keep reverting back to the small area plan and the vision of the small area plan for this area. And it had a reasonably specific outcome or objective or something to that effect, and, and this is consistent with it, I will say that. The other point is, we keep bringing back, everything is subject to change, right? I mean, in four years, if there's a push for someone to engage in building a vocational campus down here, things can be changed.
Or even just a, I mean, there's a lot of new business uses we're trying to encourage down there, which is kinda why I thought, you know, you can have a satellite space in a, in an existing mixed-use. Yeah, the elementary, public schools and secondary doesn't seem to fit.
Okay.
My suggestion would be to leave it as it is at this point in time, and realizing we can't anticipate everything right now.
All right, of course we can't, we could be here, we'll, we'll be doing this well after I'm retired.
Well, and council has a pass at this too, so that's always interesting. No offense there, please, having been there.
And I'll tell you, it goes back to, you know, how many people do we think is gonna reside here, you know, the demographics? Okay, if it's, you know, retirees, you don't, it's not gonna be attractive to have a school there, but, you know, you know, if you've got a couple hundred kids living in these areas, then it certainly, I mean, be attractive to be able to walk to school. I mean, I just go back to European countries that are, some places that have done this kinda multi-use, I'm thinking Copenhagen. I mean, those kids walk everywhere, take a bike, they, you don't even see cars on the road hardly. You know, cuz they've designed it that way intentionally. Yeah, that's it too, there's no parking. Well, for the American who does drive the car every day, you always find a parking spot, and there's no traffic, so it's nice.
All right.
Waker.
What about our martial arts studios? I've got to, I've got to learn this one too now.
Talk about popular with parents, those activities are like non-stop. Art, music, dance, martial art, music, you name it.
Nice thing about uses like that is if you have an evening, you know, people, food trucks, whatever going on down here, that normally wouldn't conflict in terms of traffic with things like this, which, obviously, I don't have, no, actually, some of that stuff does happen at night, so might retract that.
What's our definition? Yep. Specifically art, dance, martial arts and music studios.
Facilities for individual and group instruction and training in the arts. Production rehearsal, photography and the processing of photographs produced only by users of the studio facilities. Martial arts training studios, gymnastics, yoga and similar instruction. And aerobics and gymnastics studios with no other fitness facilities or equipment.
The big, yeah.
So the facility above the Sunrise Theater would be into this category, it sounds like, as a use, is that correct?
I'm not, I'm not familiar.
It used to be there, it's not there anymore.
Wouldn't it?
They're in a different location downtown, and the theater uses that upstairs space, so.
Okay, there you go, shows mom dated there. Get your mic.
Sorry, sorry. When, when we were looking at the buildings and doing something, you know, two-story, I mean, you could have the studio, whatever, upstairs and kinda thing, so I think that would work really nicely, actually. And aesthetically looking, too.
Probably just where we have the Xs, right?
Yeah, I like it, it's allowed, just, yeah, good.
Automotive. Get our, get our engines running. What's that?
Now, we have a fueling station, do we, no, we have a fueling station?
Yeah, we do.
On, and G, right. But no new, is that the idea?
Um, this plan happens, everyone's gonna be on EV. You're gonna be.
Of course not, yeah.
You're gonna be the full.
Exxon stationary at the corner?
Why would that not be permitted in the NC district? Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm a little perplexed why it wouldn't.
It may have been, but I think, well, he hasn't totally crossed off. I was comparing it to the Village Place once, and it's not allowed anymore.
Well, I mean, clearly, a fueling station along the highway is, is.
Yeah. Yeah.
You sound like Paul again.
Dumping every, that's easy answer, dump everything, BF.
BF.
It's hard.
You're gonna add it to G, fueling station?
G, certainly. Bruce and Paul have also proposed B and F to go with it.
Friends?
You know, we could have separate electric.
The trouble with that is, you'll have to cross over to get to those. I mean, it may, there are fueling stations that are quote "off-highway," but do we want that in this area?
Well, the, the hard part there may actually be for one to be built and to put underground tanks that close to the railroad, so that it might not even be allowed to do that.
Regardless, I mean, is that gonna be consistent with the other uses and, and vision we have here? I don't think it's consistent in that area. I'm, keep going to small area plan.
Side?
On the east side, right.
Not today, for sure. As it becomes more commercialized with hotels, restaurants, would, would, you know, throw a gas station in there as well, too.
Do you think you need to account for electrical vehicle stations? Because, you know, we don't have any.
Is that considered a fueling station? Maria?
I think it was.
A, a supercharging station, or whatever it would be called, that's dedicated to EV charging. Is that even in our use table?
Well, I mean, they don't have underground, underground tanks or anything like that, so it's.
It's somewhere in our, I remember reading it. So what does a fueling station say?
I was looking, it is allowed in.
The NC, yeah, I thought so.
Just put up five charging stations somewhere recently.
Downtown.
Well, we may be nitpicking here, huh?
Curiosity's got some of us now.
Where are we on fueling stations?
E.
Yeah, I think just G.
E at this point in time? Okay.
All right, here we go.
Say it again, and we need your, we need your microphone, please.
Consideration to fueling station in, what did we say? B and F also.
Just going through there, Jack.
Once you put, I mean, we're dumping all the commercial stuff in there, once you put more commercial stuff in there, it may be very logical to have a gas station there.
I've seen some really attractive, you know, gas stations compared to that Exxon that's currently in existence.
But do we really wanna encourage that there? I mean, we're trying to make it look more like.
Well, B and F is not gonna look like a neighborhood. I mean, it's.
Hotels and everything else there.
Yeah, yeah, but a hotel.
Primarily retails automotive fuels, so.
Well, let's take it, let's take it, let's take a vote on that. Should fueling stations be in B and F? We have a yes? Yes?
I don't think the railroad is gonna let you put one on the other side, so I don't know that it's. I'm a no.
I don't think we're gonna have any fueling stations there.
Not G? Since there's one in there already?
No, no, G, we started with G, but adding it to B and F. I heard two yeses. I think it failed, okay.
Let's go to our, our car lots.
Oh, BG now.
Thank you. Please do.
All right, vehicle rental and leasing sales, again, car lots.
Where in there?
I don't think that's the corridor that we're looking for coming in there.
I'm surprised that, that it's allowed in these.
In the NC, yeah.
It is allowed in neighborhood commercial?
Are we talking about just the, the sales, vehicle sales?
Or like an enterprise, or rent a car, things like that. I don't, I don't think that's anything we're going for here.
Say that again?
I don't think that's anything that we're going for here in this area.
I don't think so either.
All right.
Sales is quite different.
We're allowing fueling station in Block G, and that's all we're doing, automotive and Pinehurst.
At this point.
We're blaming, at this point, we're blaming the rest on the railroad. Per Matt Jones' comment.
Good there.
Quote that.
Are we, are we done with automotive?
Lot of space down there in Aberdeen for all this stuff.
That's right. All right, industry and wholesale. One thing we need to keep in mind, you know, we talked a little bit, again, golf industry-type stuff, so even if you, if you think of the USGA Golf House Pinehurst, you know, there's a, some sort of that type component in there with, with the turf, the grass, the fields, and then also Golf Pride, which is just over here where they've.
Well, Golf Pride is more fitting of the manufacturing industry.
Or industrial.
The USGA is more in the research.
R and D, right.
Whatever that would be, as a part of a professional office facility.
And also testing.
Research and testing.
So there could be support entities to assist with that testing.
They're, they're building a testing.
They're, they're building a testing there, at the USGA.
At the, near the driving range.
The outdoor testing facility, right.
Remember that guy was in there playing?
Very limited.
Watch?
In the admin, yes, in the downstairs portion of the, of the big building.
So people can watch them.
There again, that was kind of conditionally zoned in as it hadn't been quite quote-unquote contemplated, but also within the OP designation, I believe.
So is this entire industry wholesale storage section pretty much out of the current zoning? So it's consistent with that?
I would just mention, you know, for some thought is maybe the self-storage. I have a feeling these are gonna be very small inefficient homes, you know.
Well, there's a number of these, there's a number on these Route 5 further down in Aberdeen, obviously. Some very large facilities, actually.
I hear you, I understand it, yeah. I've got one farther down the road too, but it may be convenient to have a small one. I mean, there's ones that they are blending in very nicely in, you know, neighborhoods. I've seen a couple in Wilmington, I mean.
I don't, personally, I mean, I don't see that in the vision for the small area plan. I keep kind of reverting to that.
I think, I'm not defending it, but I think you're thinking Rosa Metal Buildings with roll-ups. I'm thinking a building with a facade where you walk in, it's climate-controlled and you keep your things.
No, it's getting better, I mean.
Clothing, you know what I mean, things like that of value. Not, you know, all the stuff you didn't know where, what to do, you just threw it in there, you'll never get it, you know, so. I'll shut up.
Don't.
I think, Paul, I think, I agree with you, because I'm one of those, that's one too. But I would like first to see this area, I mean, it's not real attractive right now. This whole area. And it is an entry point to Pinehurst, where we're going to make it. So, I mean, with what the club has done, you know, their building and all that, we're moving further towards Aberdeen. And I would like to see this more as a gateway that says, welcome to our village versus, we've gotta have all this commercial. We've got to have it right underfoot, you know, we need the station immediately, we need the storage facility, and not, just up on your toes, but, because I have some. But I would just like for it to have the flavor more of the village and let's try to keep that. I mean, so many things have happened already and a lot of the older people, and, you know, we're all gonna die, but we would like to keep that tradition going, like for Matt's children, you know, here, just young. So let's keep that in mind, because I think that's what we originally.
Let, let me, let me, yeah, I agree, let me introduce just a thought. As we think about what we envisioned this part of the village to look like in the gateway and everything. So we don't permit a lot of these commercial uses. Aberdeen doesn't have necessarily the same limitations, restrictions, priorities. So they're all, they become junked up because there's the opportunity for all of this to occur. Who's gonna differentiate when they're driving on Route 5 where it stops and where it starts?
By our plan, where we're starting. I mean, right now, you're differentiating as you get to the club, as far as Pinehurst. And, and we can't worry about what Aberdeen's doing or Southern Pines, I'm sorry.
But we can, we can kind of anticipate that, okay, well, we have our moat here and, but, you know, right two feet on the other side, we're gonna have those storage units that have roll-ups. We're gonna have gas stations that aren't subject to architectural standards. And, you know, people who are coming to town, they're not gonna know, it's hard to, you know, you know where Aberdeen and Pinehurst are.
But we are gonna have some things that say, welcome to Pinehurst.
So that's a good point to try to maybe kind of get us back moving, is that, yeah, things have changed a lot as it relates to the self-storage type facilities, right? The, the need may be a little bit different. These charges that, that we're, we're right into the throes of now is a little outside of that. We do have architectural standards that we're gonna follow through in another meeting or two. I don't think we're gonna have time to really develop anything. I don't think we have time to do any real hardcore research on what that would, should look like here in Pinehurst, if, if we were to allow it and still protect a, a major gateway or delineation or non-delineation between the two areas. So I think maybe that's another, one of those topics, again, that list is getting as long as the, the list that we're actually taking on, but one that we table for other considerations. Still knowing that someone could come in with a product if they wanted to try to, to sell the village on it. There's a process for that and show us how they're gonna look and how we're never gonna know they're there, or they're gonna look like, you know, whatever type of facade that they have. And, and maybe at this point, we have residents in the area that say, heck, yes, I need that, because, you know, the developer, when they built this place, only gave me this one-car garage and, you know, I got a 1,400-square-foot living space and my kids moved back and all my stuff got shoveled out. I need a place to put it.
I would like to revisit what, just that automobile sales, because it's exactly what Sonya doesn't want. I mean, leasing can be a small enterprise, you know, something like that. But automobile sales is huge property and I don't know that we wanna promote it there. If we do, that's fine, then.
We, we decided we didn't.
But I don't think so.
Yeah, we, we took the X's out.
Bruce, I think Sonya's point was that we don't have to look like everybody. And in fact, if in fact there's a, as you approach the village, if there's an apparent change in the streetscape and it looks the way we would like it to look as you enter Pinehurst, I think we should strive for that. And if there's some uses that are going to be a little bit not compatible with that, well, then that's, this is where we have the chance.
I absolutely agree with you. I was trying to get there in a broader fashion.
Okay.
By also affecting what might occur in Aberdeen. By us maybe finding a way to slice it both ways so that what somebody might want to develop here, I think is what Alex said, is we'd find a way to have it fit within our acceptability and not have it be a lesser product 500 feet away.
Okay, and, you know, you know, close your eyes, it's 2070. This is built out, because that's probably about how long it's gonna take.
I'm retired, right?
2070, you're probably dead.
You're not leaving.
But, you know, I, I would probably say that as the quality of the development here, it's just gonna build quality all the way down Highway 5. You know, I can see a lot of the stuff that's there now, you know, getting demoed and, you know, you'll probably see a higher-end, you know, stuff going in there, but it's gonna be the box stores, the restaurant chains and stuff like that, but it's certainly gonna be better than what's there today. You know, is how I envision it, because, you know, this is gonna bring, you know, individuals with money, you know, and they're not gonna go to the bowling alley or anything else, they're gonna go to other places. And they want it nearby, that's why they move to a community, you know, where all the services are close to them. You know, so.
I agree, I, I think quality construction, quality development can bleed into adjacent neighborhoods, because they wanna be, they wanna take advantage of the quality that, that's nearby. I think that's what you're.
Yeah, and the money that comes with it, too.
Yeah, and I think too, Aberdeen and Southern Pines were not as organized as the village as far as zoning and planning, and I think they're now having to go back in Southern Pines and kind of backtrack. And if you'll see, there's a video online where they're trying to, you know, be more positive of what they've just done by turning in millions of trees, et cetera. So, yes, I think we should set, set the precedence to these towns and say, hey, look, we're so organized, we're trying to keep this a lovely Moore County, not just Pinehurst, but Moore County. So, you know, we're here to help you, you're here to help us and work more jointly. And I think you have done some of those meetings, haven't you, Alex?
So, three points to move forward. One, I told you this is where we run out of steam. We kind of lost our momentum.
Close, we're getting close.
Two, Paul was, got me dead before 80. Occupational hazard, I believe he, he cited. And Sonya says we've regressed in the planning and zoning department and our colleagues have jumped over us.
Okay, industry wholesale again. I think artisan workshops, I think we're probably pretty well in agreeance of where that is. That's pretty broadly in those retail and mixed-use areas. We're gonna get Maria back on the mic here a minute, if she's still awake and with us over there, and keeping Alfred awake with reading definition for manufacturing industry.
Well, we have industry heavy than just industry. Let's see if there's manufacturing. All right, so we're gonna have to go with just industry. Establishments engaged in the mechanical or chemical transformation of materials or substances into new products, including the assembling of component parts, the creation of products and the blending of materials such as lubricating oils, plastics, resins or liquors. This includes medical and testing laboratories, facilities for scientific research and the design, development and testing of electrical, electronic, magnetic, optical, computer and telecommunications components and advanced product man- manufacturing. And the assembly of related products from parts produced off-site where the manufacturing activity is secondary to the research and development activities. Also included are laundry, dry cleaning plants as principal uses engage primarily in high-volume laundry and garment services, including carpet and upholstery cleaners, diaper services, dry cleaning and garment pressing and commercial laundries.
That'll teach you to be prepared and bring the list of definitions.
So, so you had us and lost us about three different times as you read this.
Yeah. I mean, there was ups and downs in that description, so.
This, this industry manufacturing kind of limits a little more, but this is just industry.
What is industry manufacturing?
There is no.
There is none.
The only other one is industry heavy.
What about manufacturing? Does it start with manufacturing? So maybe that's a good reason not to permit it.
Yeah.
Really.
Definition that we're using is way too broad and I think you almost have to exclude it.
All right, what a, and, and I'm, I'm gonna wager that our definition for storage, the warehouse and indoor storage and wholesaling and distribution's probably gonna put us right out, right back where we are with not permitting as well, too, so.
I agree.
All right. Takes us to the top of page four, we're getting to our agricultural uses. And the only one we're showing on here are the community and private gardens, which we are allowing across the board.
We good?
Good.
We good on agriculture? Okay.
All right, brings us to infrastructure.
Oh, this is always interesting.
This is, yep. I'm gonna recommend a break after we get through this one. Parking structure, again, this is kind of. It's like a parking deck or ramp or, or otherwise, but. Yeah, not, not just a quote-unquote surface lot.
And we're gonna permit parking as a principal use?
Are we?
Question, that's a good question. As a principal use, that's sort of curious.
That means I could go down there and create a parking lot and charge you.
Right. I don't think.
Well, I work in the hospital, I can get parking, so I'm gonna park there.
Yeah, but that's a secondary use, that's a, a, as a primary use, that's kind of curious, isn't it?
I don't like that.
I, I don't think, okay, the second one, parking lot principal use, we need to strike that across the board.
I mean, if this were a metropolitan area, I can understand you could.
And put it in accessory uses.
Haven't we discussed parking garages in Pinehurst quite a bit, I mean?
That's what I think a parking structure might warrant some.
Yeah, but.
A, a surface lot as a principal use, no, but maybe a parking structure. Maybe, maybe we need to think through that a little bit. I, I obviously do not think it would be, it, it's not warranted everywhere. It's not warranted everywhere which, which is shown on these, on the columns.
Well, when the hospital built the new facility here, they obviously had a very large and very nice parking facility associated, but that was not the primary use that was approved for that, is that correct?
Well, you had two primary uses for that, but that, it was, it was permitted.
It was permitted.
And it was permitted within that use, but yeah, I mean, it is, basically you gotta look at it as like a standalone, standalone structure, maybe not part of the same lot, or would we allow it on the same lot as? I mean, if you gotta think, if we're doing a lot of these mixed-use type buildings, a lot of those have integrated parking decks within. So cue us up on the, on the, cue you for the definition on that, Maria, for the parking structure.
An above-ground or subsurface parking deck or garage.
All right. When we get a concise definition, we need more clarity. I, I would, I would read that as maybe not just standalone on its own, a, as a, as a standalone use. I, I think we need to make sure that we're allowing it if it were integrated as well.
Part of a hotel, for example?
Exactly. So mixed use, so that would be, I don't think we want it in A. Again, our footprint, existing conditions, things like that. But I can see, I can see B and C and maybe that's it.
B and, what'd you say?
B and C.
Yeah.
And if you, if we don't allow this in the areas where there's commercial, then how does that restrict businesses to parking? Are they left to? I mean, I think the area, the plan intends to be discreet with parking. But if you're having a business, do you have to have this use to allow parking for business? And if you don't, yeah, what, what can they have?
It, it might, it, it would take some sort of interpretation, I think. So I would wanna err on the side of caution in, in the two blocks where we think that it's, it's likely where, that something other than a surface lot on, on the lot to service just that use might be needed.
Okay, it would still need to be a reasonable size and that would be part of the.
I'm just trying to give us enough.
Yeah.
Arrows, if we, if you will, to say yes or no.
What's the resolution there?
I'm a little. I, I think be, allowing it in B and C.
B and C? Baker, Charlie, okay.
You know, not to sound repetitive, but, you know, when we try to figure out what the density is and then figure out the number of cars, you know, that's gonna drive whether or not you've got sufficient street parking. Yeah, so I'm thinking about some of the places, and I'm gonna use the term generically, you know, multi-use communities that I've visited. I don't live in any, nor would I, but they all have parking accommodations because they just don't have enough street space. They're using their street space for outdoor eating, events, you know, so, but the buildings there are also greater than three stories. So now we have another challenge, we've limited ourselves to three stories there, which may preclude our ability to put cars within, I think what you were originally mentioned, you know, into buildings that also have, you know, residents in them.
And you, you could also do subsurface. So that might, might keep you within really four levels, but only three stories. Small microcell facilities, we're gonna have to permit them across the board. Jack may remember that legislation that came through. We, we worked on some amendments back in the heyday, if you will.
Question there.
Okay. Utilities, Moore County and VOP. VOP, I, I don't think is on the, on the horizon for being a utility, but that's just how the existing language is. Moore County, I guess this is allowing for the ability of maybe some sort of pump station or otherwise there in the area. Yeah, we're well.
So why is it left out of H, just curious?
I would guess because it's not currently permitted in any of the, maybe resident. I would guess because it's not currently permitted in any of the maybe residential districts, but I see it in.
That may be worth adding.
Yeah, I think so. Okay.
I mean, they have one across the street there at the corner, there was a well site, I don't know if it's still active or not.
Right there at Trotter, yeah. Okay. So, pretty well accessory uses, you think we maybe take a quick recess?
We have to spend a lot of time on accessories because they are accessory uses?
We can run through it.
Okay.
Run through it.
All right, ATMs is accessory, so you probably want to see that mirrored up with the banks, credit unions, et cetera. Beekeeping, I think we might want to allow that, and we kind of, we typically allow it in our residential areas now, it's like an accessory use backyard areas, I don't know if we, what non-residential type areas or uses we might want to allow, but again, there's so many restrictions on those as far as environmental conditions for the bees and, you know, the likelihood of them making it, especially near the golf courses and the pesticides and all.
That new pollinator garden. Yeah, so E and H.
Cemetery, I guess we might want to go back to where we allowed the religious institutions and allow them as an accessory use, or that could include columbariums, too, so it doesn't have to necessarily be. I didn't want to say that, thank you, Paul, for putting this so bluntly. We're going to leave it alone?
I would leave it.
Okay. Child, adult, daycare, home operations, again, we allow that for like, well, that's home occupations we allow for, but I see that listed down below. But I guess, I guess we should probably consider allowing this in residential districts, too, like in home daycares.
I think so.
Farmers market.
And this is an accessory use, that's the key here, right?
Correct, mhm, which there's limitations on how much of the area of the principal dwelling and all you can use for those things.
Right.
Farmers market.
I'm curious, we don't allow that anywhere as an accessory use, didn't we discuss that we wanted to?
I think we need to add it.
Wherever it can fit, I mean, probably not in the residential, but other than that.
ACD.
ACD, is that where you think that makes sense?
All right. Concealed telecommunication facilities.
Concealed, why do we care?
You're not supposed to see it, right? Looks like a tree.
No, oh, no.
It looks like a fake tree, that's what it is, looks like an extra-large Christmas tree, that's not decorated.
Is that considered a concealed?
Yeah, some, I mean, they're called, what, stealth technology or something like that, or it's, some of them look a lot, I mean, they're not all created equal, some of them look really nice, but it's soos all around based on what.
Where it is, its proximity. And I think the 5G technology is kind of eliminating that.
Yeah. Okay, we just want to leave that alone?
I'd leave it alone.
All right, propane tanks, fuel tanks, what you're also not seeing is special requirements that goes with those, are pretty much putting them underground, so you're not going to see them, and of course, there's other environmental factors there. ICE vending, these things are popular, I know I've had to swing by them several times on the way to the beach or elsewhere, but not fitting. Home occupation allowed in the residential districts.
Yeah, why isn't we, oh, it's in residential, but not in I, why is that?
You mean, you're at home occupation, Jack?
Oh, I see, that's, got it, never mind.
Pools and spas, residential districts. Pet house, pet runs, same, playground equipment, same, unless we want to consider that, I think we kind of showed a playground in Block A in the detailed rendering, the small area plan, so maybe, again, it would be accessory, it'd have to be accessory to something, maybe a park, I don't know. So we want to put it in A or leave it? So maybe B, A and B?
At school.
Do they really?
Well, I said because I have the kids that have the Boys and Girls Club open at night, so that the parents can go.
Have outdoor playground, it's like a little strip behind where.
I did not know. Okay, accessory buildings, I think we need to allow that across the board, accessory dwellings.
A mother-in-law suite?
Yeah, but what you don't see here is the SU, the special use requirement that goes with those. I don't know that we're going to really see the, when we get to those lot standards and what those lots, I don't think they're really going to have room for those, so I don't know that we allow them. I don't think we're going, yeah, it'll end up being 80 or 90 square feet, won't meet minimum housing, yada, yada. All right, accessory structure, these are like pergolas, arbors, trellises, things like that, bulkheads on lakes, I'm not really going to apply here, but docks, same way, and the last one, so that takes care of accessory uses. Well, now we're in temporary, and this is pretty much the same as everything we have in use table. All right. Okay, wow.
Did this get through where you wanted to get through? Yeah, I think it was a good discussion, I think we covered a little stuff there.
Very beneficial, very fruitful. What was that definition you got to read again, Maria?
Manufacturing.
Heard on that, we'll come back and you can finish.
Even missing yesterday, this is, this is about as hopeful as I thought we could really be, I don't think this puts us back on scheduling too much. Next steps are to kind of go through the lot design, street design, landscaping and things while we are working very diligently back in the depths of the planning department on writing this integrated conditional zoning requirement table of uses, dimensional standards as we move forward, a formal recommendation and hopeful adoption by village council on the small area plans with the form-based code as like an addendum or appendix to those form-based codes, so.
So, we have a small area plan, which gave us the vision for where we want to go, we have a, we have the form-based codes which define within a particular area or block, streets, building types, and so forth, and dimensional requirements and so forth, and then we have the block diagram, which tells us where within these areas those things fit, and we have the uses. Now, let's see, how do we put this all together, because that's what you were going to describe with that memo, which is, we have all those pieces, parts, but how are they executed? There has to be an overlay district set on top of these areas, is that correct?
So it's going to be a little different than that, so, and this is a part.
Give us a broad outline of how this works.
So, and that's the part that's going to require so much more heavy lifting for staff before we can bring something, a tangible visual to you guys to see how that's going to work, but I'll give a pretty broad description. So, we're going to create now, not an overlay, we're going to get rid of the base zoning districts in both of the small area plan boundaries, based on the regulating plan. So the regulating plan, as you know, we pared it down even from just a small area plan boundary, like for Pioneer South, we took out Quell Haven, we took out Trotter Hills. So our boundary is going to shrink for our, what we're going to call these now, Village Place, Form-Based District, Pioneer South, Form-Based District, and with each, within each of those, there are going to be those sub-districts or those blocks, so that's going to be your base district in the Carter-Dawn area, the what is now the Pioneer South overlay. We're going to remove the overlay, we're going to remove the neighborhood conditional, you're now going to be Village Place, Form-Based District, Block A.
If I look at a parcel, I will no longer know, it will no longer be said neighborhood commercial or professional office or whatever, it's currently zoned, it's going to be zoned within a, within a what? It's going to be within a district.
Village Place, Form-Based District, it's going to be, create a brand-new zoning district.
Look at the other pieces, parts, such as the regulating plan and the form-based code and the use table.
So you're going to start with your zoning, and then we're going to have a brand-new table of uses for both of those zoning districts.
Okay.
So we have Table 8.5 now, all right, so then we're going to have, this is going to be Table, we're going to drop it in Chapter 8 as well, probably at the end, and we're going to make sure we ought to go back to Table 8.5 and with the asterisk, say for these two areas go to this section, right? So this is where it's take, we're going to cross-reference ourselves to death here. So then we're going to have our table of uses that correspond with each one of those districts, and then we're also going to have a subsequent table of dimensional standards separate from 9.2, you're not going to go to 9.2, you're not going to go to 8.5 for these areas, you're going to stay right here, this is where you're going to live, right in that one section, and then with the conditional zoning requirement, see, what you're not going to see here, what you don't see with the exercise we've done, is going to be an X and an SR where applicable, and a comma CZ, meaning you're proposing new development or redevelopment in those areas, you got to get the conditional zoning requirement. So then what happens is the formerly adopted small area plan and form-based code becomes your guiding plan as well, so someone would go to that as part of the conditional zoning requirement, meet the base uses, meet the dimensional standards, or propose to vary those slightly, and then they'll come to us and say, you know, and staff would be reviewing these, technical review committee would be reviewing that the new streets meet those street standards, that the architecture meets those architecture standards, and then so your consistency that you're reviewing, your plan consistency that you guys are reviewing when you make your recommendation, the village council is reviewing when they're making their action, is going to be based on the small area plan and the form-based code.
So, does everything, will everything require a conditional zoning?
If it's redevelopment or new development, so for existing development.
Regardless of the size of the parcel or infill or anything like.
So if it's greater than 50%, that's, remember the redevelopment, the new definition we have for that.
Okay, so any parcel that's going to be developed greater than 50% redevelopment must go through the conditional zoning?
And we do have, especially in Pioneer South, you know, we've got pretty significant large tracts that are pretty much together.
There's a few small ones, too, but you're right, there's some bigger ones.
And then in Village Place, of course, the main core area is all going to likely be under some sort of common ownership, and that's, with the understanding that two years from now, that may not be the framework that we're going to have in place, but this gives us time, we get the moratorium off, we protect those areas to make sure that we have some sort of outcome of this vision that we worked so hardly on as a community, but it gives us, especially as staff, and again, planning zoning board, as proposals come through and council, to evaluate that process and what's better, and then if we can get some of this stuff off our plates and then tackle the PDO update, then we're going to have some resources, hopefully with a very able and good relationship with a consultant, to help us fix our document and our process where, you know, we went away from having, you go, if you're RTN, you go here, you go to this section, that's all you need to know, you know everything in here, I mean, your RTN, each zoning district section might be 80 pages, so you have a, you know, a unified development ordinance set as this thick, we, you know, communities got tired of printing copies like that, but now that we don't live in a print world anymore and searchable or HTML-type documents, you know, we can put together a more user-friendly document than we've got, so we're not going to nine different sections of the PDO to look for an accessory building.
Right.
We go to the 30% cap, where's that at? Well, that's in Section 8.6, but where do I know my setbacks? Well, that's in Table 9.2.
All right, well, we've all bounced around there, and so the planning staff will know how to navigate this process, I assume, in which case you are not allowed to travel in the same car together for the near future. Should you all get in an accident, we'd be in deep doo-doo, believe me.
Let the record show that, too, going to use that for some more negotiation. No, I mean, and that is, and that's what we're here to do, we're here to learn and know and navigate that process, and we should identify what's working and what's not.
Great, what else would you like to accomplish today?
Confirmation of next meeting, Shannon, help me out, there's so many dates.
It's scheduled for the 21st, which is next Tuesday, is that correct? From 2:00?
Oh, it's another 2:00, okay.
Do we have, as far as we know, we're going to have a quorum?
Shannon's pulling out our poll, I didn't bring it this time.
2:00, 21st.
How many, how many have we said will attend? What's our head count that we expected? Okay, so it looks like we got a buffer of plus one.
Excellent, good, all right, well, then the next meeting date is a special meeting scheduled for March 21st, 2023, that's a Tuesday, at 2:00 PM. Is there any other discussion necessary today? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Move to adjourn the regular meeting, or the special meeting at 4:26.
We have a motion to adjourn the meeting from, who was it, from Matt and then Sonya, second, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor saying aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned at 4:26, correct?